All right, and good evening. It is Wednesday, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five. It is currently six forty eight. It's time to call this Community Development Advisory Committee to order. Let's start out with attendance and Deborah.
Deborah Hogan, Maryland appointee.
Mary Ann Callahan, Maryland appointee.
Michelle L. Lockland, Member at Large.
Marilyn Austin, Sixth District. It is loud.
Jordan Trice, Fifth District.
Except for his.
And I'm Justin McGregor, Seventh District at Chair of the CDAC. If it wants to stay up. So we're not going to go over because it's a special meeting, correct?
They don't have the minutes prepared for the last one. They'll be at the next meeting.
All right, thank you. So we have a discussion and presentation on amending our fiscal on amending our fiscal year fifty AAP. You're asking me? Steven, what is the AAP? I don't have my definition. It's in the book. I just handed back to you.
Working, working. Okay. AAP is the Annual Action Plan. This is the thing you do every year.
Yes.
To assign budgets to various agencies and programs.
Thank you.
So obviously fifty is from two years ago.
Yeah.
We're currently in fifty one. We're planning on fifty two, but this is an amendment to the two years ago.
All right. And all of us but Jordan were here for that. Two years ago? All right, with that said, we have a guest with us. Please introduce yourself and let's talk about this amendment of our fiscal year fifty.
Good evening. My name is David Holleran. I'm thirty six year member of the Binghamton Fire Department, twenty year or so Union rep, last eighteen years, President of the Binghamton Professional Firefighters Association.
All right, David. There's been discussion about transferring unused funds from our fifty fiscal year fifty and before, correct?
It's from forty five up until forty eight. I think we're looking at the that range of years.
So we would like as a board to hear the uses of that fund, just so that we can get a hand and then go ahead, I guess, and bring up a potential vote to amend those funds for that particular use.
Yeah, in particular, you're making a recommendation. So you would be voting on a recommendation.
To city council.
To city council and the mayor's office.
All right.
So the uses kind of came up unexpectedly. We had one medical vehicle that we used to respond to homes for medical emergencies was involved in an accident. I'm gonna say February, March timeframe. We also had another medical vehicle that's two thousand and six that is really starting to fail. And additionally, we hired a number of new firefighters in April of this year and depleted for the most part, all of our backup new turnout gear. And so we went to the mayor, the chief, and with our support, the union support, and went to him and said, we have these, you know, immediate needs that just kind of came up in between budget years. And is there anything that he can do to help fulfill those needs? So where it went from there exactly, I don't know. The mayor looked for looked high and low for funds and I settled out at using some CDBG funds. And I've been involved in that conversation for the last couple of months with council members, so on and so forth. And that's where we're at, you know. My understanding of CDBG funds for fire department uses is a permissible use. You know, Google it. You can find many, many examples of other departments in New York State and across the country that have used those funds for these purpose, for fire department purposes. And you know, we, you know, I understand the big picture, what the CDBG funds are for, for supporting low income housing, so on and so forth. But that's where these vans are going to most of the time. You know, we service low income housing and low income communities. So my opinion, my research, hundred percent permissible use of CDBG funds, and we appreciate your support.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
I I want to make a clarification and get it on record. You can use CDBG funds for fire equipment. This falls under what's considered public facilities. Because according to HUD, equipment and vehicles at a fire station are inherently a part of that facility. And therefore, that's why it qualifies under public facility. The main caveat is that the fire station itself has to serve a predominantly low income area. All of the fire stations have been mapped out, and I believe all of them meet that criteria. So no matter what fire station we have in the city, purchasing of trucks, safety equipment, jaws of life, any of that kind of lifesaving equipment is eligible under CDBG under the public facility classification.
Very good. Okay.
Steve, I have a question probably that you can answer. I don't know if Dave can. But do we have a breakdown of all of the costs and has that breakdown been given to city council so that they know exactly what's being spent on what?
I have that. We proposed using a hundred and eight thousand dollars times two to purchase two utility vehicles with the equipment and lighting that is necessary to completely outfit those. So a total of two sixteen for the two vehicles. And then twenty two sets of turnout gear at sixty five hundred dollars a set for a total of one hundred and forty one thousand, six hundred and eighty five dollars and eighty one cents for a total total of three, five, seven, six, eight, five, and eighty one cents.
Thank you.
Now, I don't know if Stephen or Dave can help on this. Am I not mistaken, that city council did give them some of the money last week? I'm just trying to. I'm just trying to find out.
Yeah, my understanding is initially the mayor proposed what I just mentioned. It was brought to city council, and there was only six council members present instead of seven. And it was a tie vote. So because of that, it didn't pass, it failed. My understanding is the missing council member would have voted for it. The mayor asked for it to be re-voted. That wasn't acted on. Council flipped it around and re-proposed funding half and and having the rest of it funded in next year's annual budget. And that's currently just going through the City Hall wheels of motion, so to speak.
Okay.
And I just want to make another point. We still need to do a thirty day public notification, a public comment period. Once the actual number is determined, technically, city council cannot vote on it until then. Somehow that got lost along the way. So there's no point in us submitting multiple budget proposals if they're if they're going to get changed. So we need to see if city council is going to sort of initially approve it. And then we'll have to do a public notification, thirty day feedback period, and then city council can vote.
So thirty notification on what?
A thirty day notification on the actual line items being moved to what line item?
Oh, okay.
Which would be part of the approval, whatever you're approving tonight.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm new at this. So if we have the total amount that they need from unspent money from years ago, what else do we have to spend it on? Why not just fund them all now? Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, why did city council want to split it half now and half again in the future? If we have if we have money that needs to be spent or it's wasted, just spend it all, right?
If I may just.
It doesn't work that way.
I think they wanted to fund half with general fund money. So the city council wasn't using any CDBG monies when they came back with their counter proposal. It was to use half out of the general fund, not anything to do with CDBG monies, and then put the rest of it in next year's annual budget.
So they didn't want to touch our money with the intention that it was going to be used for housing purposes?
I I'm not I've not been informed of what city council wishes to do. I know there are some ideas for uses of some funding, but I've not been given a breakdown of what they want to do.
You said it is from forty five through fifty?
Forty five through forty eight.
That's for forty eight. So the time is up for.
Here, I'll trade you again. Get you another one.
All right. So the question is, oh, there we go, is the question is, is it the time as it for those fit year forty five through forty eight, the time is long since passed for those agencies to utilize those funds? That my only concern is like if they were waiting for matching funds, we say yes, we're going to give it to the fire department. And then all of a sudden in November, the agency comes looking for the rest of its funds. What do we do?
That won't happen. So agencies that were, there were some programs that the agency spent zero dollars on.
Okay.
Those agencies had plenty of time to submit something and then just never did for whatever reason. So that money, they're usually only awarded for a program year. So if it was, say, for year forty seven, during year forty seven, that was what their agreement was going to be based on and was based on. The mayor could, of course, choose if he wishes to extend the contracts, but no one's even asked for that. So
Okay.
The money is just kind of sitting there. And it's not just like, say, someone didn't spend any of their money. A lot of times, it's agency spent all but two thousand here, one thousand there. Sometimes it's just certain things like your guys' stipends. If we had a full like full CDAC that was here for the entirety of the year with no dropouts, no add-ins, you would spend all of the CDAC stipend that's set up. When's the last time we had a full CDAC that everybody was here for an entire year? So that's that's part of it. So these things just catch up. Other parts were from salary issues and updates. HUD came through and made us redo how we determine code enforcement salaries.
Okay.
And because of that, at the same time, we updated how we did legal salaries, finances salaries, economic development salaries. And so where before we just sort of gave them money and the sort of said, well, that's what we estimate your portion of the salary. Now it has to be proven. Now it has to be tracked. Now it has to be reported. Because of that, they're not spending the salaries. So there's older salary and money that's just probably never going to be spent. So all of this is kind of sitting out there. And this is standard year after year, you know. We have one line that's like nine cents, and that just happens.
Okay.
So periodically, you sweep all that money up into one pool and you put it into something. And I'll also let you know something else here. Because the equipment is a public facility and we're spending that money in excess this year, in theory, that allows an additional, I just did the math, roughly fifty five thousand dollars in additional service money could be spent because you you cannot spend more than fifteen fifteen percent of your actual expended cost in a year on services. So if you're taking old money and you're putting in for a non-service type activity, that allows you to spend additional money on service funding. To be fair, any non-service program would qualify for it. This is just an example of one that.
So would that be in? So essentially be in an amendment for fiscal year fifty one or no fifty two?
More than likely, if the mayor wanted to pursue that, what we would do is if we have older service money from the last two years, it's not part of this.
Yeah.
We would allocate it to a service program or project or give one agency, you know, a little bit more money or whatever, however the mayor wants to do it, if he wants to do it that way.
Okay.
And it wouldn't require an amendment since it's already service money.
Okay.
Dave, I have a question about do you guys still do grant writing for turnout gear?
We attempt every year to do various types of grants and sometimes we're successful, sometimes we're not. There's no guarantees in grant funding, obviously. A couple of years ago, the last time we got turnout gear funding from a grant was through a direct grant from Donna Lepardo. And she bought us twenty sets of gear, I think. But we've had such a tremendous turnover and and members were behind the eight ball as far as turnout gear. But I don't know if that answers your question or not, but I mean, this this funding right here, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, we have a twelve million dollar budget. You know, it's it's a would be a small help in that need in the in the capital budget for next year. The mayor's trying to get a one point eight seven, you know, basically two million dollar fire truck. It's not cheap to have a fire service or a fire department anymore. And our association helps out and lobbies and works with different agencies to try to get funding. But even 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 in our best day when we're successful, it's still just a drop in the bucket and what it costs around a fire department.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Dave, quick question. The new firefighters that you've added, are you at the level you'd like to be or?
We currently are at one ten and are we're budgeted for one seventeen. We're budgeted for one seventeen. I don't know if this is on anymore or not. We're budgeted for one seventeen. But through a grant, as Michelle brought up, we did get some federal funding for a safer grant is called, and it's going to provide for an additional eight firefighters.
What is going on? Hello? I'm out too.
I think we're all out. Yeah.
Testing. Kind on, kind on.
We're just just yell out at each other.
Test, 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 test. Yeah, everything's out.
Everything's out.
Hello? Hello, hello?
Hello?
Test, 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 test. Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
What's your ideal number?
Test, test, test.
In a perfect world.
One thirty?
Ah, okay.
It working now?
No.
Hello?
Hello? No.
And to answer your question, NFPA recommends four firefighters on a truck. We currently ride with three
Wow.
On a truck and
On all your trucks.
On all of our trucks.
Wow.
So Steven said that it has worked. So what Steven said is that it's recording, it's going out on the feed, but it's not working in our speakers in the auditorium. Oh. Oh.
No.
Can you hear me? Testing, one, two, three, four, testing.
I don't hear anything. All I hear is static. Yeah. Can you hear me?
Hello?
Boom, 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 boom.
Can you hear me? Anybody there?
Testing, one, two, three. Okay. Nobody else can hear me. It's okay. Yes. All right. So he said in a hundred and thirty would be their ideal dream scenario. One seventeen is where they would like to be staffed to. They're currently at one ten. Did everybody hear all that? Yes. Okay. Anybody else have any more questions for Dave?
Thank you.
Okay. And I have a question on our procedure on how we do this. Do we make an?
Let's not bother Dave. Let's go. Let's let Dave go.
Oh, is are we excusing Dave?
He's had enough.
Up to you, however you want to do it.
Do you want him to hear your statement or no?
Uh, it doesn't matter. He can certainly say if he wishes.
Then very good.
So one issue we have, and I'm got things on, I'm just going to talk loudly so everyone can hear me. One issue we have is timeliness. So we have to spend a certain amount of money by the end of June or we have a timeliness issue. One thing that causes timeliness is unspent older funds. So obviously, this would address the timeliness issue. If you use this money on some kind of client side things, that's not guaranteed to spend the money quickly, then it might not be spent, and then you have a timeliness issue. That being said, older CDBG money can be used for anything that's CDBG eligible. Just so with this money. A balance on the other end, it's non-service. But suggestions that come up that they're all alternatives, like instructing housing, rehab housing, those are eligible. Some rental systems can be eligible. Anything you guys would have normally through CDBG could be eligible as an additional use of the funds. But please take the timeliness into account if you make a recommendation.
So if we made a recommendation of another entity for those funds, that's something that would have to be not only I mean, it'd have to be something that's already shovel ready, basically, to be able to be.
Basically, yeah, something that's able to go very quickly.
How much money are we talking about the entire forty five to forty eight? What is in the pot?
I think the mayor's original estimation was approximately three hundred and seventy four thousand. I think that was the the number we were looking at.
Three hundred and fifty seven is close to what is in the pot.
Yeah, so I'm, yeah, I think that's the way he's.
Three hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars isn't going to get you anywhere in a housing project.
No.
Well, I mean, you can rehab projects. You could rehab housing with it, but it takes time. Many contractors, you need to have people apply. You need to verify them, everything.
If if we understand city council correctly, and and I think we get a gist of what they're saying, they're looking at big projects to do low and moderate income housing. And that three hundred and seventy some odd thousand dollars isn't going to even touch a new project.
Not a not a big project, yes.
No, unless they want to do small, but I don't hear them talking about single family dwellings and rehabs. So I mean, let's be realistic about this, you know. They might want to do something, but is it the best thing to do?
Yeah.
Is it? Is it the most timely? Is it the most effective? And doesn't it help people who are helping everybody else? Ha, thank you.
And I think. That's up for you guys.
No, but I I'm talking to my colleagues. I think that's what our recommendation should be is like, let's get real here, people. And this serves the whole community. I mean, this is the cool part. It satisfies the HUD regulations, the feds, but it serves the entire community. You can't get a better deal than that. You really can't.
Deborah, can you hear them?
Correct.
No, it's there's precedent. Yeah.
Correct. I I can't speak for anyone before Rich David because that's when I came in and is under his administration. But we did use, we did this exact same thing roughly, I want to say twenty twenty, maybe twenty twenty one to buy new fire, a new fire truck.
Yeah.
For the fire station and the exact same thing. We identified all the unspent funds. Then amendment to the action plan dropped half a million dollars into that and bought a brand, well, was used, but those things are expensive. A very nice fire truck and all the accoutrements that go with it. HUD, when they came down, looked at the fire truck, they we did a had an onsite sort of audit. They came out, wanted to look at the fire truck. They took pictures. They thought it was grand. And then they left. So it's an eligible use. We've done something like this before. Yes.
Jordan?
I'm ready to vote. Let's vote. But I think if you fall, I would like to just have to, I guess, stipulate certain things that we've just talked about that, you know, this pile of mine. This is not going to be a much bigger deal than what I'm thinking. I think we need to say that, you know, this is the best we can all acknowledge.
Well, even if you do single housing, I just want to say that you have to have people fly, you have to have contractors.
It's. I'm saying that we have to map out why we're saying this.
Many of us have been on this long enough now to know how quickly or how slowly these projects develop and how many projects actually happen in a fiscal year. Was it seven or something like that is the max we've ever seen, at least in the years I've been here?
What do you mean by seven?
When we had, we did seven, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it was like, yeah, and that fun, that pot was bigger than this, wasn't it?
Yeah, and that's us fully using it. I mean, that's with the limits on contractors that we have available.
And that's giving us that full fiscal year. This is only till June. Is there something where I'm going to need to present again to the city council?
I don't think so. This should be enough. But if they do ask for it, I would ask if you could if you could present.
That's fine. All right. So do we have to come up with a word? Of a resolution to do this or do we?
I think if you want, you could just say you could recommend to, you can make a recommendation if you like the mayor's proposal to follow the mayor's proposal for this specific project and the reasons why. I think that would be sufficient.
Okay.
Or if you have an alternative, understand, I don't want you to think that I am advocating for this. You make a decision. It can be used for other sources, but or for other projects, but please be aware of limitations and the other things that would that would impact that.
Okay. Eighty seven, eighty one. Six, eighty seven, eighty one, I thought it was.
No, it was three, five, seven, six, eight, five, eighty one, sorry, three hundred and fifty seven thousand, six hundred and eighty five dollars and eighty one cents.
I think that's what the mayor identified previously that he was going to to go for it.
To service or can it not go to service?
It could.
Or do we need to take?
You can go to service because if you fund a non-service project, sufficiently, you can also fund a service project. It's a three to seventeen ratio, which sounds weird, but it's fifteen percent.
But would it come from that same pool or would you have to go through a pool of unspent service?
It could come from that pool.
Okay. I'm happy with that.
Do you have a project or program you would like to fund? Service program or project you would like to fund? Service program or project you would like to fund?
Do we, you took my book away from me.
No, I think pretty much everyone got shorted a little bit last year.
Nobody got hammered per se.
It might be easier to ask what type of service program you would like to put that money into. Maybe that would be a better direction. Youth, elderly, handicapped.
Homeless.
Homeless.
Isn't, isn't, um, one of the ones, especially in the winter months, um, what the warming station, and isn't it City Church that goes out with the van and he finds people and takes them, they shower them and do?
There's various outreach activities, but so for example, um, YWC has a street outreach, uh, team. And then, um, showers of hope also is considered street outreach and they provide, um, showers, obviously clothing, that kind of thing. Um,
Yeah.
Well, this would be CBGB money. It's not ESG money, but CBGB money can go to ESG, an ESG activity, absolutely.
Yes.
So recommended to street outreach?
Yes. Yep.
There's only a couple, so.
Whoever needs it.
Yeah.
That's fine with me. Yeah. You know, we're in a situation where it's unused funds that if we don't use at some point, the, the feds are just gonna scrape back, aren't they?
Um, I cannot say for certain that would occur. I can say that if we don't meet timeliness, next year's entitlement will be reduced by the amount that we were over for timeliness.
Yeah.
This year we were over for timeliness by two hundred thousand.
Yeah, and in this climate, we don't want to take the chance of having our money reduced any farther. Um, so Yep.
I can't, or I can't speak for any agencies, but probably a very quick one would be something where they, uh, purchased food. And they basically stocked a freezer or something full of food or something like that.
Shower supplies, whatever they can. All right, so, whoa, she's gone.
Well, her purse is, let me go see.
Oh, okay, yeah, her purse is still there. Um, so our guests, our recommendation, uh, will be to fund Dave's, uh, request of three hundred and fifty seven thousand, six hundred and eighty five dollars and eighty one cents for the Binghamton Fire Department. Uh, for public facilities of equipments, trucks and gear, their turnout gear, two utility vehicles. Um, of the, from the three hundred and seventy four thousand dollars worth of unspent CBGB funds, the remaining seventeen thousand roughly dollars will be used to go to a street outreach program. Um, stipulated in this current year, used by June. Spent timely. The street outreach. I thought that's what I was saying as I was continuing. Put it in front. All right. So our recommend date, so what we're gonna vote on is the recommendation to city council that in order to timely spend this money to ensure our funding levels for the next fiscal year, uh, that we are recommending the three hundred and fifty seven thousand, six hundred and eighty five dollars and eighty one cents to the Binghamton Fire Department for their public facilities, including two utility vehicles and turnout gear. And the remaining roughly seventeen thousand of the three hundred and seventy four thousand dollars of unspent funds be then put towards street outreach, uh, and the assist in the battle of homelessness.
The only thing I would say is I'm not absolutely certain that's three hundred and seventy four. It could be said three seventy, I can't remember the exact amount, so
The remainder of the unspent funds.
Okay. To street outreach?
Yep.
Any caveats about street outreach? In a timely manner. Okay, and yeah.
Before June.
So that actually, that can clarify. So just so you're aware, that can clarify it. So if someone comes and says we want to spend it on salaries, we'll be like, you need to spend it on something that's gonna be a bit quicker. So, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Blankets, jackets, food.
Okay. That's next motion on the table.
Mm-hmm.
Russ, they were talking, or, uh, Councilman Rathmo was saying that seven hundred thousand dollars in unspent CDGB monies was discovered. I don't know if that's true or not. I don't know if that has any bearing on this, but if it's a lot more than
It may include other fiscal years.
Yeah.
But between forty five and
Forty eight, I believe is what the money that was
I was just concerned that you're, you know, you're maybe possibly funding two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand dollars for whatever.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, 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 it's
Okay.
I know that there's additional money. So, yeah, or I know that there's some unspent funds in forty nine and fifty as well. Yeah. We're just finishing up fifty right now, so.
Yep. All right. Uh-huh.
Wait, who did the initial? Oh, okay. Off one, okay.
This is on a side note. Can I put this, that I want to make this motion in honor of my high school best friend Scott Pavlik, who is a fireman who deceased in July.
Oh, okay. What's the name?
Scott Pavlik. Uh, yeah, I was stunned by his passing. I was the older unfit one, so I always thought I was gonna be the one who goes first. Um, but he belonged, I knew long before he became a fireman, that he was here to save lives. He saved mine in any way and every way possible um, in high school and he was a lifeguard through the end of high school and all of college. Um, and then worked with children and then went on to work for the Binghamton Fire Department. Um, made all of us, our circle of friends prouder than proud. So. All right. Do we have a vote? Do we want to be on the record for these?
You need to be on the record.
All right, we're gonna be on the record. So let's start out, um, I need my glasses. Marilyn Austin. John is absent. Mary Ann Callahan. Deborah Hogan.
Aye.
Michelle Alasone. Jordan Trice. Justin McGregor, yes.
All right. Motion passes. Okay. Um, one other item I is that today we receive the home ARP bids. Um, this was a request for proposals for, uh, nonprofit agencies to apply for almost two million dollars in additional home monies from a few years ago. This money is supposed to be targeted towards, uh, housing for homeless or at risk of homelessness, as well as supportive services and TIBRA. Um, we need to form a committee to review the applications and I would like, the planning department will request, actually, I think it'd be the housing department, would like to request that Justin McGregor become a member of that committee to review those applications and make recommendations. We can do it via Zoom. Uh, and it'll take place over the next few weeks. Uh, it's up to you. If you do not think you can make it, if you want to see if anyone else wants to do it from CDAC, but we would really like CDAC input on this.
Okay. I, I accept that as long as it's not October eighteenth. You and I are gonna be busy.
Okay.
I'm getting married.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He offered. I, by the way, yes, I want, I do want to take you up on playing bagpipes at my wedding, please. Thank you.
Remind me. All right.
Anything else? Is that it?
That would be everything, what you want to talk about.
Do we have anything further? I'll talk to Rebecca if you don't. I will more than happily talk to Rebecca. Yeah. And they took our recommendations pretty highly in, in the last fiscal year as well, so I don't think there's gonna be a pushback when they actually hear our reasoning and, and yeah, I think the biggest part about it, I don't think they understand the whole, uh, timeliness of it and the fact that the more unspent funds we have, the less money we get in the next fiscal year. So spending that is huge. Yes. All right. So with that said, anything further? Let's do attendance. Let's start up with Deborah.
Deborah Hogan, Maryland Pointy. Marilyn Austin, sixth district.
And I'm Justin McGregor, seventh district in the chair. Uh, do we have a motion to, uh, adjourn? Thank you. Seconded. All in favor? All right. With that said, we're to a close. Thank you.